Alright, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready.
Alright, sounds good. We'll go and call the meeting to order. Some meeting of the Saldovia City Council, Monday, August 11th, 2025, time is 6:04 PM. Excuse me. We'll go ahead and do roll call. Peyton.
Here.
Keith Lee?
Here.
Langbart?
Here.
Rojas?
Here.
Alright, we do have Barber was gonna be absent. He was traveling, so we do, and we have, so we do have four out of five members present, and we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and continue on with the meeting. And let's see, Liz, if you could lead us off in the pledge.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, excuse absences, as we said, just remember Barber. And I M D agenda approval. And just for the record, we, the borough did remove, ordinance twenty-six dash zero one prior to their meeting. So it will no longer be, need to be considered by the Saldovia City Council at this time. I'm assuming, I was talking to Liz a little bit before the meeting, I'm assuming that there won't be enough time in this election cycle to get it, if they were to get it passed and back in front of other communities to get it on the ballots. Is that right, Liz, from what you understand?
Yeah, that's correct, from what I understand.
Okay, so for now then, we'd be looking at needing an amendment tonight to remove that off of our agenda.
Alright, I will make a motion to make an amendment to tonight's agenda then and remove item K one ordinance twenty-six dash zero one.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda by Keith Lee to remove ordinance twenty-six dash zero one, which is item K one. And we have that seconded by Langbart. Any further discussion on the amendment before we vote? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
Okay. Motioned to amend passes for the affirmative and none opposed, one absent. That'll take us back to the main agenda item. And we would look for a motion to, unless there's any other changes, we'd go and look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
I'll go and make, go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended by Langbart with a second by Peyton. Any further discussion on the agenda as amended? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda as amended. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. The agenda as amended is approved for this evening. That'll take us to the consent agenda, which is item E. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove any item for discussion and a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed in our new business. We have a couple items tonight. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from July 28th, 2025. The second is item two A, ordinance twenty-six dash zero two. An ordinance at the city council of the city of Saldovia enacting chapter eighteen point eighteen administrative approvals and permits, amending chapters eighteen point two zero definitions, eighteen point five two commercial business district, and eighteen point two four zoning districts, and repealing and reenact- reenacting chapter eighteen point seven zero land use table. And this will be recommended for a public hearing on August 25th, 2025. Does any member wish to remove any item tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda this evening. All those, oop, I need a, I don't think I got a motion yet to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda this evening.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve tonight's consent agenda with a second by Keith Lee. Any further discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with a vote of four in the affirmative, none opposed, and one absent, and that was the approval of tonight's consent agenda. Item F, mayoral proclamations, we have none. Item G, public presentation prior notice, we have Dr. Alyssa Rodriguez. An economist with the Cape Peninsula Borough Economic Development District, otherwise known as KPAD. And topic for this evening is comprehensive economic development strategy or the CEDS update.
Give him a moment, she's gonna be rejoining as a panelist here.
Okay.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I want to make sure I, I do it the right way, since I was added as a panelist. Yeah, thank you so much for having me and giving me an opportunity to share with you what KPAD is doing in regards to the SEDs. I have a short presentation, if that's okay for me to go ahead and share my screen. Would that be okay?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Okay, are you, let's see, allow, are you seeing the beginning of a PowerPoint?
Dinosaurs, yes.
Oh, yes, I, I realized, I realized I never quite stopped loving dinosaurs, so now I get to share them. Okay, so forgive me if a lot of you are familiar with the previous SEDs. I do want to do just a little recap of that, and I, I am, you know, being thoughtful about the time and that sort of thing as well, but the, the Kenai Peninsula has had a SEDs in the past. And what we're doing right now is we are kind of doing the SEDs for the next five years. And so a comprehensive economic development strategy really is a blueprint for the, the entire region's economic resilience and growth for the future. And as such, it's really important to get the input from communities and individuals all over the borough. And so that's really what the goal is with this. And so I am, like I said, I'll do a little recap of what, what was in the past five years. And then what we're doing to try to make sure that this version of the SEDs, this next version, is as strong as it can be, is it as inclusive as it can be, and as supportive of the region's, again, resilience and growth as, as possible. So in the previous SEDs, there were really five big goal areas. Technology, telecommunications, workforce and human capital, infrastructure, land use, natural resources, the business climate and entrepreneurship, and then regional partnerships. And in the next slide, I'll go into a bit more of kind of what, what was done, what were the successes that came out of the previous SEDs? And when we think about these goal areas, they are intentionally very broad. The SEDs can be used to really provide leverage for communities, nonprofits, for, for KPAD, for the cities, you know, for an individual city or for a borough, so that they can reference back and say, hey, we have this project that we want to do, and look at references our SEDs. This references, you know, this big broad version, or I'm sorry, big broad vision of what our communities and what our borough wanted to do. And so it adds a lot of strength behind the different projects that people may want to undertake. And so the goal areas are, are broad intentionally so that a lot can fit under there, so long as, you know, we're all kind of moving the, the boats in the same direction. And please stop me at any point if anybody's got, got a question. And then, you know, I, I certainly have time for questions at the end as well. So when we look back at that previous SEDs and the five different goal areas, there, there are a lot of successes. And rather than just kind of give you list upon list of, of, you know, ah, in this category, you know, these are the successes. I really tried to boil it down into, into five different areas. And so KPAD worked really hard to expand broadband access. They did it through advocacy, they did it by helping with some of the funding for it in terms of their time, really working hard and focusing on a lot of the maps that were done when it comes to broadband, who had access and who didn't. And when we have asked people over the, the past months, what they've noticed the biggest improvement in, looking over the past five years, far and away, people have said that broadband internet access, et cetera, has been, what they've noticed has improved the most. KPAD also did a lot of work on workforce development, linking the workforce development needs to housing, showing that that's crucial, how, how crucial housing is to being able to have a workforce that can actually stay and live and have a good quality of life in the place where the jobs are. Tying it also to childcare, and again, we can't participate in the labor force if we don't have childcare for, for families that have small kids. And then transit and transportation, infrastructure, et cetera. Again, if we don't, if we can't get the people where we need them to be, then it really, really hampers our labor force and that growth and resilience in our communities. They invested in mariculture, erosion mitigation. And then also, they worked on a microloan program to really help small businesses. And, and this is the only time I really call out small business here in particular, but if we can think back to COVID, KPAD did an enormous amount of work really trying to help individual businesses through COVID. And so I feel like that's something that when we just kind of do a little snapshot of like, oh, this was the previous SEDs, and this was what was done, it can be really easy to kind of gloss over this like massive global pandemic that we had. But I think it's important to remember that, like, these were the goals that, that, you know, that the borough had come up with. And, and this is the work that was done, these are the successes, but also in the middle of this, there was a giant pandemic that we all, that we all had to deal with. And so while there was a lot of success in a lot of areas, one of the big, big things that was done was a lot of individual one-on-one help to small businesses. And that microloan program was one of the things that came out of it. And then working with regional partners and really trying to build strong relationships. So that when we look at those different goals that we have in a SEDs, KPAD alone isn't going to, you know, go out there and accomplish every one of those things. They just don't have the power, the time, you know, the, the bodies to do it all. And so we do it because this is, because it is a borough-wide plan. And so everyone in, in different communities and at different organizational levels is all working in the same direction. And so that's why those partnerships are so crucial. And so they put in a lot of effort to really try to build those, those partnerships across the borough. And then a really, another really cool tool that came out of it was this pre-disaster planning toolkit. And, and obviously it's related to the pandemic, but it, but they intentionally made sure that it applies so that we can try and think of what we might need ahead of an earthquake, ahead of, you know, wildfires, all sorts of, of different disasters that might happen, economic disasters as well, so that small businesses and nonprofits, different organizations can really be ahead of it. So these are some of the things that came out of the previous SEDs. Really, just as, not just an example, but also, you know, to, to kind of share the successes that, that have happened. And so I'm not going to talk about what are the goals for this SEDs, because that is what we are actively creating. What I can share that some of the feedback that we've gotten so far, housing has really been at the top of the list. Housing has been far and away the thing that people are most concerned about. And once we get beneath housing, then it, it comes and goes. It, you know, it's a lot of energy, it's a lot of infrastructure, childcare, you know, medical, different things like that, are all kind of vying for, you know, spots three through five, or I'm sorry, two through five. But what I've got here is a QR code and it'll take you to kpad.org backslash SEDs. And that is where we have the web-based survey. And so we've got two different ways that we're really bringing in information from individuals and communities as a whole to try to figure out what should this SEDs be, what should the vision and the roadmap look like for where we want to go in five years? And so we've had a number of opportunities that have come and gone in terms of presentations and engagements. And, and then there'll be another in-person engagement in the city of Kenai on August 25th. But the difference between that engagement and the website survey is really just that the website survey has more language. And so when we do the in-person workshops, there's a lot more of just me talking and that sort of thing. So when we have a topic that we're talking about, there's, there's a lot of context that I give. And, and I've worked with the SEDs committee so that when we have the web-based survey, you don't, you don't need me. And the questions still make sense and all that sort of stuff. And so we're trying to really encourage community members, city council officers, nonprofits to, to go to the website and, and work through the survey that's on there. It should not take more than I want to say about fifteen minutes to go through. But, but that can vary because there are some open-ended questions, and so if people really want to put a lot of information in there or feeling very impassioned about a particular topic, it, it can take a little bit longer. And, and we would really, really welcome that kind of lengthy feedback. You're also welcome to just call KPAD or to, or to reach out to me, and we can just kind of have a conversation about these things as well. We really want to make sure that, again, everyone's input is included, and the things that are important in Saldovia are reflected in the SEDs. And so we've got, we will form those big overarching goals, then we'll kind of have a little bit more detail, we'll go into each of them and talk more specifically about the needs, and talk more specifically about individual goals, you know, underneath housing, for example, and those sorts of things. So all of the data that is coming through the survey is going directly into the SEDs. And it'll be included, you know, in its entirety as an appendix as well. So yeah, there, there will be more opportunities as well where we will host live virtual workshops. And so rather than going on the website and kind of doing it on your own, you know, in the, in the evening, instead of, you know, watching some fun show or, or, you know, whatever you might be doing, you can tune into one of those that'll be coming up, that'll be just like this, it'll be a Zoom. But we'll go through and we'll talk about each one, we'll look at the data, see what's happened in a particular sector, and then we'll reflect on that and talk about where do we want to go. And we'll answer survey questions kind of throughout the presentation. So there's, there's different ways to do it depending on people's preferences. And with that, I will stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, appreciate that. Any questions? I'll top your head from anyone on council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Great presentation. I like your background. It kept me engaged, I'll tell you, looking at the pictures. I guess part of the, you said that the input you've gotten so far in targeting what the previous goals were. Was there, as far as each community, do you have a community? From each community, do you have what their input was as far as how it affected, it's Saldovia, let's say. Do you have it broke down by communities of how the previous goals were either helped the community or didn't fulfill the community or what?
I, I think I, so let me restate that just to make sure I understood the question. So you, are you asking if, for the previous SEDs, do we have a list of successes by community? Like, this was a great thing that was achieved in, in, you know, Soldatna, and this is a great thing for Homer or for Saldovia. Do we have that?
Right, and if you did or if you don't, how would you accomplish that in the next?
Yeah, I, so I want to say yes. And I, I have not been part of the past SEDs, except to kind of like put together the, what was accomplished in kind of a big, big way. But every year, one of the requirements of a SEDs is that you have to do a report, and it has to go to the Economic Development Administration. And so every year, KPAD puts together a report about what was done, kind of what were the accomplishments, what were the efforts? And so I am quite sure that KPAD has it. Whether they have it like, hey, here's the report right here, and you can, you know, here's four or five reports. They're all quite short, which is nice to just be able to thumb through them and see what has happened. But I think between that and, and really like a phone call to Caitlin and Cassidy at KPAD, I think if they don't have it kind of split out nicely in the reports, then you may just be able to have a phone call with them and, and chat because they're both so knowledgeable. The other, I also wouldn't be surprised, I think they probably have a spreadsheet. I feel like I've seen it. But it's just not something I have access to. So my short answer is, yes, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure it already exists. The where it might be is it might just be right on their, their website, because that's where they keep all the previous reports. Or it might just be, you know, a phone call to Caitlin or Cassidy to, to get that information.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I would imagine the city council would receive reports. I know we have.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, and we are gonna do it for the future. So I apologize, I think that was also part of your question. But yes, going forward, yes, absolutely, trying to keep track of, you know, yeah, we've got these, you know, these great accomplishments, but what, what happened? Where was it? And that really is something that, that the Economic Development Administration wants. You know, if you're gonna say like, oh, we're gonna put in, you know, we're gonna grow business and it's gonna add this many jobs. They want to see that, okay, so, so where are they? Show me the jobs. And so it is tracked in that way as well. Yeah.
I have a quick question for you. Yeah, and obviously for us, it's a little different because we're off the road system, right? So you've got your accomplishments, like say broadband for expansion, for example. Your urban, your urban areas versus rural areas, you know, I mean, I don't know if they were able to, you know, put in fiber, then pipe it out to, you know, the rural areas, or if that's more of a, of an urban, urban growth sector. For us, obviously, you know, Starlink was huge for us, you know, in terms of affordability and just, just more bandwidth in general, right? Where I know HEA is still working on a, a project here. Hopefully in the future, they'll get funding to expand fiber over here, you know, that'd obviously be a game changer, so. But let's see, second part, so that's, that's important for us, is to make those distinctions. And then the second part is for your, you guys use this reporting then, I'm assuming to go after some federal funding, federal grants and stuff? Is that, would that be the case?
Yes, the short answer is yes. So I should say, historically, the, the SEDs did open up a lot of doors for federal funding. A lot of different federal grants would say, like, this either needs to be in your SEDs or, or, you know, it was kind of a show me where it is in your SEDs, and that got you a lot of extra points or those sorts of things. Specifically for grants that come through the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, it, it really does need to be in your SEDs. You need to be able to say, this project directly advances this goal. But it does really open up the doors for a lot of other things historically. It could be manufacturing, and this manufacturing grant through the Department of Commerce needs to see that it was referenced in your SEDs. They really want to see that they're, you know, broadly speaking, somebody's giving you money, and it's not just going to this one-off thing, it's going to overall advance a region, a community, a city. The, I think federal funding in general is a bit more of a question mark now than it, than it used to be. And so I still think though, that this is going to remain an important piece in terms of whatever federal funds are available. I think that this will continue to be something, that it'll be important in terms of referencing so that you can have access to those funds.
Gotcha. Now for that, those, for like EDA grants and stuff like that, do those have to flow from the borough up through the state and then to the federal? Or can they go direct from the borough?
That's a great question. I, I want to say, I don't even think they have to go from the borough. I think, and it just depends on the grant. But it doesn't have to be the, the organization that's responsible for the SEDs that necessarily applies for a grant that references the SEDs.
So it could be KPAD directly versus, versus the borough. Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it could even, yes, so I'll, I'll stop there, but yes, it doesn't have to go through the borough.
Okay, nope, sounds, sounds good. Yeah, you always, I mean, things get lost sometimes when you, you know, if you do the work and it's got to flow through multiple agencies and multiple layers of government, and then, yeah, who knows where that money ends up then, you know, when it's all said and done at the end of the day.
Yes, and everybody takes their like ten percent administration fee, and yeah, yeah.
It gets whittled down quickly, so.
Yes, yes, very much so.
No, it's exciting that you guys are, you know, continuing to do that, this type of work and stuff. And obviously, it's important to, to Kenai Peninsula Borough, you know, its residents and, you know, businesses and, you know, all the different entities that, that benefit from, you know, from this type of funding and stuff, so, and, and just information in general, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate, appreciate your, your presentation for sure, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Yeah, any more questions from anyone on council? Okay, anyone from the public tonight, Liz, that had anyone to weigh in or have comments or questions?
I'm not seeing any hands raised online, Mr. Mayor, so.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, well, Dr. Rodriguez, thank you, and yeah, I'm sure we'll be seeing you again and look forward to participating in the future. Alright, have a good evening. Thank you. Alright. Let's see, item H is public presentations for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public this evening, Liz?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Mayor, so no.
Okay. Take us to item I, committee and advisory board reports. I see none on the agenda here.
Correct.
Item J, administrative reports, looks like none tonight. Item K one was removed prior in the agenda approval process. Item L, unfinished business, none. Item M, new business, and this will be Resolution twenty-six dash zero three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, approving a contract with Arctic Constructors LLC for the city maintenance shop installation project and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. And I'll go ahead and let staff present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you loud and clear.
So this is on page fifty-five of your packet. You will remember that we had, or you may remember that we had a resolution that was awarding a contract for this project per RFP zero-two twenty-twenty-six at the last meeting. However, after speaking with the contractor and speaking with a, a public works director in another community and the fire marshal's office and just going through some vetting checks, it didn't sound like, well, it was that that method was not going to work for us. It was a method of providing insulation over the existing insulation, which with that vapor barrier would have trapped in condensation and potentially caused further problems for the future. So not wanting to spend money to create problems, we were at a standstill, and it happened that city clerk Diamond had received an email after that meeting asking how their, a company asking, Arctic Constructors asking actually, how their proposal did. And while it wasn't a valid proposal for that RFP because it wasn't received and confirmed, before the proposal date closed, it actually is a proposal that works for the city. It is a spray foam. The project would start on the twenty-sixth if we move ahead with it. The crew is already working at removing insulation in the buildings because it's a short turnaround, short turnaround in order to be able to facilitate this process. I did receive an email today that we, it sounds like we're gonna need to come up with a, a few additional funds in order to do the fire paint on it. So that's unfortunate, but I think we can squeeze some money around in the grant itself and make it work. I just haven't had the, the opportunity to have that conversation with our finance officer. As it is, we're doing this as a sole source because we have been through two rounds of RFP proposals, of requests for proposals, and we did not receive any bids that would suffice for the project. So we've vetted the process pretty well, and this company, we So we've vetted the process pretty well. Um, and this company, we did do references for them. Uh, they had in their application, um, per our code, they demonstrated skill and experience in performing contracts of a similar nature, uh, have a record of honesty and integrity and capacity to perform in terms of facilities, personnel and financing. So with that, I would like the city council to approve, uh, the authorization for a contract with Arctic Constructors LLC so that we can move forward with this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Heidi. All right. I'll go ahead and open that up to any questions or comments on, uh, resolution 26 dash 03.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep. Go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, just for clarification. So this is, we, we got to resolve that this output will work for us and get the work done that we were talking about. And that's necessary to insulate the building. So this would accomplish what we've been trying and working on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm in favor of moving on with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Any other questions, comments? Heidi, I have a question. Does this, now this takes care of the walls and then does it take care of the, the roof then also?
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor. It'll be the walls and the ceiling.
Okay. And then you guys are removing all the old insulation vapor barrier. And then I'm assuming this is going to be a direct, uh, spray applied to the, to the substrate of the, of the metal on both the walls and the, um, and the, the ceiling, the roof. And then at the end of it, it gets a, another spray coat of, uh, intumescent or if you have fire, fire, um, retardant paint. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay.
So it will, hopefully, you know, that means it'll make that structure even, um, and just a little bit more sturdier. So that's, that's something exciting as well.
Oh yeah, there's no, no question it'll do that. It'll help with sound insulation, uh, everything. And then, yeah, obviously the biggest piece I would imagine, like we discussed before, was the, um, the fire, the fire piece of that. I mean, yeah, typically urethane has to be either covered with, with drywall or, or in some sort of coating has to fire, uh, rated coating has to be applied. So.
Right. So that is an additional $11,000 outside of our project budget. But like I said, I think we can move some things around and, um, it'd be really, it'd behoove us to get this done because, uh, this is the best deal I've seen. Um, I think they're going to do a, a good job and this will be great for us for a long time coming. So, um, this has been a long process and a long road and, and this is, uh, I'm really appreciative that they're working for, working through this process with us. And they were able to come down into our budget as much as possible, uh, in order to get this project done.
Okay. The current insulation you guys are pulling out of, is that like a, a three or four inch blanket?
I'm not sure how thick it was originally, but right now it's probably at about an inch and a half, two at the most.
Okay. Yeah. Typically on those old metal buildings, I mean, even newer ones, it's a two, three or four inch, uh, you know, insulated, you know, blanket that's got one side of polyure, uh, like usually a white, uh, poly vapor barrier on it. That would, you know, that's what you would see from the inside. So, um, and then, uh, what's the, how many inches of, uh, foam are we going to get in the, um, ap- applied then? Do you know, do you know that?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I would have to look back at that proposal. I didn't bring it with me.
Okay. Yeah. I think typically, uh, urethane is about an R seven or 7.1 per inch. So I would think, yeah, even if it's a, you know, I know it won't be any less than, than, than two inches. It'll be somewhere likely between two and three. And then, um, um, yeah, that should, with the, you know, sealing up the building, uh, in terms of airflow and then just in terms of overall, um, insulation, our value, we should see hopefully a little bit of cost savings as well on heating that section of the building all also. So I'm definitely in support of the project. Any other questions, comments from anyone on council? Okay. We'll go to public. Anyone from the public that wishes to, um, weigh in on resolution 26 dash 03?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll go and bring it back to council for final action on resolution 26 dashes 03.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 26 dash 03.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion by Rojas to approve resolution 26 dash 03 with a second by Peyton. Any further discussion on resolution 26 dash 03 before we vote? Okay. Hearing none. We will go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution dash 26 dash 03. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langvart?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes with form, four in the affirmative, none opposed and one absent. So that is the approval of resolution 26 dash 03. All right, Heidi, uh, yeah, look forward to getting that negotiated and finalized. And then hopefully that work can take place, um, as, as planned. That'll take us to item N, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did not have a chance to, uh, do a written report. I've been traveling all day. It took a lot, a lot more than anticipated to get from Soldovia to Anchorage and then, um, Anchorage to Utukavik was delayed. So I made it in to the hotel room 15 minutes before this meeting and, and had to get everything set up. So I apologize that I did not get that done, but I do have, uh, just a quick verbal update. I wa- uh, wanted to let you guys know, uh, you may have noticed that the abatement ordinance was postponed. Clerk Diamond was working on that and, um, noticed that there was a piece in there that potentially we want to hold on to. Uh, so she's running back and forth through legal for that, making sure that that's a full document before it comes back to you guys to be introduced. Um, you guys may have noticed that there is, uh, was a Facebook post today about a high turbidity event happening. This happens, uh, every fall and every spring summertime. I am starting to wonder if the heat and lack of rain has having something to do with it. Um, it'd be, I'm curious if we do get the grant for the hydrology assessment, if that can give us some better indicators, uh, to keep an eye on it. We have been going through it for about a couple of weeks now and David has been monitoring that and the, with the help of, of Riley and Amanda. And it's just this, it's a constant watch up at the water treatment plant. We do test daily. We are still within our turbidity and chlorine levels. Uh, and we actually just had a, an alarm. So he went up there again this evening, uh, which is, it coincides with Kevin, with Alaska Rural Water Association was coming down to do our sanitary survey. So he is going to go meet him up there and they're going to walk through the process, uh, do a backwash tomorrow again. Um, they're just trying to scrub those filters and get them clean. Um, but there's just, it's a lot of sediment that's coming out of the reservoir. So, um, a constant, constant battle happening up there, uh, with those filters. And, uh, hopefully that those turbidity levels drop down, um, here in the near future and we can go back to normal operations. And, you know, continue with our support with ARWA and then our, our remote water supervisor will be over at the end of the month. He could come over this week if we needed, um, but he'll, he'll definitely be here at the end of the month, uh, just to continue to, to troubleshoot and work through the steps, um, with our crew. I wanted to let you know that we are already looking at a few different, um, smaller purchases and items. Um, we, the, we had the pickup room arrive with, and that was through the Aqua Grant and it was supposed to come with everything. And, but apparently we already had hooks, so they didn't send hooks, uh, but those hooks were used on another piece of equipment. So they're resending those. Uh, the shop door that was, um, was, uh, installed a couple of months ago is shifting a little bit. So we're going to have somebody come and fix that, but those should all be within that grant. Um, city, oh, uh, wanted to say road material, we're working on that 22,000 from the Denali Commission. I spoke with them. She's actually here. So I got to see her. That was great. Um, we rode over together. Uh, they are going to tack on that 22,000 to the, the jackloft matching funds that we received. So the ones those come through, those should be available. We still have about $33,000 in road material to use. Um, so we'll be looking at doing some more projects this fall and next spring. And another thing we're looking at is potentially, well, at least getting a quote for safety ladders for the dock. That way we can start planning that, um, for FY 27 if we have to. But as we continue to make improvements on the cranes and, uh, you know, just the little things that are going on out there. They did some, um, work on some of the, some cement work out there and it just, it's nice to see some attention being put into that infrastructure. So, uh, looking forward to seeing how to also improve those safety ladders and I'll let you know, um, when we get that quote. And then we can plan on if that's a this year or a next year thing. Uh, you know, as you may know, they did a cemetery work group that looks amazing. Uh, we had a, a great group of local individuals and some not so local, uh, come out for an afternoon and, and then it just, um, really was what was needed. Speaking with a, a volunteer who's been there pretty regularly for the last couple of years. He said, he had a great suggestion. If we can do that once in the spring and then once in the summer, we should be doing really great. So, um, planning that for the future to do, just to plan on spring work party and then, um, continue maintenance through the summer. Let's see here. I am sad to say that the funding for the KBner BIL projects for the land acquisition around wat- the water treatment plant and Trina Lake was canceled. Uh, the Ketchumack Heritage Land Trust did get ahold of me and said there were potentially some other options that we can look at. And they still want to work through that project with us. Um, but the NOAA is not going to do another round of funding. They instead incorporated it into the current projects that they, into this, this funding cycle that they're in. So that's unfortunate, but we, uh, continue to work with KBner and Ketchumack, uh, Heritage Land Trust. And they've been really great partners to work with. You may have seen that the RFQ for the generator installation, uh, with the automatic transfer switch was issued. I don't, you know, it was really limited funds that's left that's available and we're trying to use them up for that 50,000 grant. Uh, we've had a few interested people. We'll see how much of a project we can complete or what we can do with it. Um, but we're hoping to at least make some progress. The also exciting thing was that the RFP for the lower portion of the raw water transmission line was, uh, finally issued. So, uh, as you know, that grant was signed. We're moving ahead. The RFP was approved. It closes on September 4th. Um, and then, uh, potentially we could be awarding that, uh, contract to somebody to do the design build for the replacement of that infrastructure. Um, I did mention the Denali Commission funds for jackloft and roads. I, we did have a kickoff meeting for them. Those funds were officially awarded. Um, and I look forward to talking to Jocelyn a little bit more over the next couple of days, uh, as she's here. And then we are starting our CIP process. So we did a call out for projects from the community as well as, uh, personal invitations from local organizations to let us know if there are city projects that, uh, community members or organizations think that should be included in the CIP or if there are projects from organizations that they would like themselves to have included so that it shows that the city is supporting that project. Um, not that we're funding it, but that we want to support them in their endeavors for looking for funding in the future. I believe that's what I have for now. The jackloft, uh, is moving forward. We're still finishing up that EA and process and, um, the uplands. Uh, preliminary decision, the public comment period for that closed on the seventh. So waiting to hear back from them, uh, what their final determination will be. Oh yes. And you guys may have seen that the state did install, uh, vehicle counters in the community. And they're excited for us to get our pedestrian counter up that they loaned to us. That way we have some comparative data on how much traffic is happening within the community. Um, and then they can extrapolate that out to an average over the year. And that data should be able to be utilized moving forward for some other grant funding projects, uh, regarding transportation. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. You, uh, quick question. Are they going to get that, uh, the pedestrian counter up here soon? While we still have pedestrians running around or plan on that? Okay.
Yes, I tasked Kalela with that job, um, because she's really good at getting things done that need to get done. So, um, I, I imagine that'll be up here in the, within the week.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good. Any other questions from council, uh, for Heidi on the manager's report tonight? Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate, um, your report this evening. Item O informational items not requiring action. Uh, first one is the declaration of candidacy period for the city of Soldovia. October 7th, regular election is open and closes on October, or excuse me, August 15th at 4:30 PM. There are four seats to be filled in the upcoming election, two three-year terms ending in October 2028 and two, two partial two-year terms ending on October 27th. Um, September 7th, 2025 is the last day to register to vote in the October 7th, 2025 city and borough elections. And city manager Gago will be in Utukavik from August 11th through August 15th and on personal leave from August 16th to the August 24th. Any questions on item O informational items not requiring action? Okay. If you guys know of anybody you think would be a good candidate for council, make sure you're prodding them because the deadline's coming up. So we'd like to get some folks interested in the community, um, and get them on the ballot. Item P executive session, none. Item Q council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Peyton?
Sure. Uh, thanks for all your hard work, city crew. Where's your whole love of the fort by yourself tonight? You're a brave woman. And congratulations, city manager Heidi, for becoming a bachelor this weekend. You're a delight.
Thank you. Uh, Keith Lee?
Education, not marriage.
I know. I know. I think it's funny. I keep saying that. Good job graduating. You're amazing.
Keith Lee?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. Langvart?
Nothing this evening. Thank you guys for all your hard, hard work and Heidi, have fun where you're at.
Kate, Rojas?
Yeah. Thank you everyone for all your hard work and congratulations, Heidi. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, yeah, same for me. Congrats, Heidi. Appreciate, uh, your dedication to getting things wrapped up. So that is awesome. Um, and, uh, let's see. Yeah. Have a good meeting up there in, uh, in Barrow. Um, if that's your first time, enjoy. Hopefully the weather will be, will be good. So, um, our next meeting is going to be, regular meeting will be held on Monday, August 25th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right. We have a motion to adjourn with a second. Do we have anyone opposed? Nope. Hearing no opposition. We will go ahead and adjourn for the evening. All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it tonight.
Okay. Good night.
Okay, you guys.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.